Enter into. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I will. Motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
I second.
Okay, moved by Jill, seconded by Karen. All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We're gonna head into executive session. We will reconvene at seven P M. See you then. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We are going to resume our voting meeting for tonight, March eleventh, twenty twenty five. And we will start our meeting as we always do with public comment. I'll turn it over to Dr. Tripp to introduce our public speakers.
All right, our first speaker this evening is Mookie Lundgren-Lahav. And you have three minutes, just in case you didn't know that.
Hi, I'm Mookie. I'm a sophomore at IHS, and like some others in my grade, I really want to take Physics C next year. In case you don't already know, Physics C is a calculus-based physics class and the hardest physics class that IHS offers. It provides a valuable experience for STEM-oriented students and is especially valuable if taken junior year. Physics C has many benefits. There are physics competitions you can take, building off of the material of the first semester of the class, which can go on college applications if you take them junior year. There are selective summer programs, such as SSP and RSI, that highly encourage students to have taken Physics C to be competitive. It's just an overall exciting and meaningful class that provides real value to juniors and seniors who take it. There are students like me who will meet the qualifications to take the class junior year and have the motivation and ambition to thrive in Physics C. Opportunities need to be opened up to us so that our academic growth can occur. I know that this school has limited resources, but allocating enough of those resources to Physics C so that all interested juniors and seniors can take the class is very important. There's a big impact to be made if our learning is invested in and encouraged.
Thank you. Our next public comment person is Ann Johnson. Oh, who's not here?
She's in person.
Okay. Okay, that's it for public comment.
Okay, open up for board responses.
Yeah. Never having, having ever taken physics even. I'm astounded at the thought that there's something beyond physics. But having said that, I'll be happy to look into it a bit and see how many people have been closed out and what our opportunities are for making it open to more people. And I imagine the rest of the board is in agreement with me about learning how many people have been shut out and all of that. And thanks for coming to talk to us and thanks for your email. You sent us an email earlier too, didn't you? If not, someone else did.
That was actually another.
That's another student. Okay, thanks for coming tonight.
Okay. And you said she would really like the class? What did you say? It's a good class? And what did you say after that? No, just now I thought you responded.
I've already taken pre-class, so I'll be able to take classes next year if we're led in a progress. And there's a lot of us who really want to do it.
Okay. And Lukey, is this your first time coming to the board? Well, thank you very much. It's really appreciated because sometimes I know that students may feel somewhat fearful approaching the board and all, and we are approachable. So thank you very much. And, and especially for speaking on behalf of your classmates with regard to this and for yourself too. So thank you for advocating for yourself.
I'll just chime in to also say thank you very much. And also, I envy you because if I could have spoken with such joy about physics many years ago, I think I would be in a very different place in my life. So that's very exciting. And I do, I do hope that there is an opportunity. I don't know how appropriate this is right now. I know that we can definitely look into it more, but is it possible to get like a thirty-second? Like this is, this is a new, very new for me. Like, is there any way to know just like what the, the current status is?
Yeah, we're in the process of getting course requests. And at this time of year, this is typical with the high school folks not being able to promise where we will place folks for next year. So that's where we are right now. Ms. Grover may have some additional information, but it's, it's not unique for us to say to students at this time of year that if there is space, we will, but it's rare that I've heard of a student being shut out completely when we finalize a schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. I'll also echo that, Mookie. Welcome. Thanks for coming. Thanks for talking. Yeah, we had gotten another email from a student and we have an email chain. I was just kind of looking back over my email. For, for this was gonna be something that we're gonna follow up on and we should be able to give some guidance after we speak, especially with Mary Grover, who's looked in on the email. Okay, thank you. So we can move on now to item, agenda item four point three. That's gonna be checking in with our student reps. And now I'm not remembering who went first last time, but I think it was, I. Okay. That's what I thought. Okay.
Sure. So this Thursday, March thirteenth, middle school students will be dismissed at eleven forty-five. And the afternoon will be dedicated as a literary afternoon for all high school students in attendance, juniors. Juniors and some seniors will be presenting their PBats, including to Ms. Earwood and some other community members, teachers, staff, and two officers from the New York Consortium of Essential Schools, which ACS is a member of. On the, on that note, the following Friday, thirteen staff members will travel to the School Without Walls in Rochester, the only other upstate school in the consortium. On this visit, staff will observe classes, conduct a moderation study with other staff who are visiting, review the new science PBAT rubric, and take a look at inquiry-based learning and portfolio-based assignments. And other news, following the success of Hates Town, the ACS Theater Department will be hosting one-act plays performed by students. These are still in their beginning stages of initial visioning rehearsals. And finally, for me, in other news on the creative front, many seniors have made some headway in their senior projects, which is a graduation requirement. They don't have to be academically related. Some of these projects, you know, they span from podcasting and woodworking to sustainability-based projects and et cetera.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. I'll start by just highlighting that our washer and dryer is installed in our school, which is awesome. We've been the only school in a district, in the district without one. And it's just gonna be a huge help to everyone, to our custodian, who can now wash things on-site, which is a ton more convenient than shipping them off other places. And it's just a wonderful resource for our broader community, for anyone who might not have access to a washer and dryer and just in different situations that arise. And I'm especially excited about this as a member of the Community Closet Family Group. This is super exciting and just means that our process of setting up can be much more efficient. Trips assignments will be announced at, by the end of the week. And we're revving up to move into more rigorous fundraising and planning efforts over the next couple of months before our mid-May trips week. And finally, just a shout out to our library. They've been doing some really awesome stuff. Our librarians created a March Madness bracket, not for basketball, which I've been loving too, but a book competition where students vote for their favorites. And so we will have a championship winner to share with you next time we're here, hopefully. And they've had just some wonderful displays for Black History Month and Women's History Month. So it's been great to be turned on to some new authors and yeah, just learn more. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you again. To start, spring sports at IHS, the tryouts begin next week. Next, this weekend, the Code Red Robotics Team will be headed to the Finger Lakes Regional Competition at RIT. This is a three-day-long competition from March twelfth to March fifteenth, where fifty-four robotics teams from all around the Finger Lakes will be able to compete for various awards and eligibility to compete at the national competition. And then the following weekend, Code Red will be headed to another competition, another regional called, called the New York Tech Valley Regional from March twenty-sixth to twenty-ninth. And at this event, sixty teams will compete for eligibility to the national, national competition.
Yeah, and I heard, I heard the robot is really good this year, so I'm excited. I first want to say that I'm in very much support of encouraging more students to take Physics C, which was mentioned in public comment, and giving everyone who meets the prerequisites an equal opportunity to get into it. I'm taking it right now and it's like one of the hardest classes I took, but it is very rewarding. And I also had issues being placed in the class as a rising junior. So it's nice to see someone brave and step up because I know other students are facing similar issues. And some updates, next week, March seventeenth to twenty-first is Social Justice Week. And so there's gonna be like presentations, panels, and events throughout the week in this very room. So a lot of teachers usually sign up their classes to come in to attend different presentations by the community members as well as IHS students and staff. And students have just been made aware of the changes to Google Services today. And so this includes not being able to access the YouTube website, like Google Maps, Google Translate, all those extensions, Google Services. And so the board reps are trying to help get the word across to the students so they aren't completely startled by this. And we'll try to observe what the student response to this is when it is implemented on March twenty-first. And so we'll let you, we'll, we'll let you guys know how it's going during the next meeting.
Hey, everybody. So the choir-themed concert is this Thursday, March thirteenth, in Culp Auditorium at seven P M. There's gonna be a showcase of great schools, a great spirit in school, and we hope to get as many people as we can in the house. The Taller Editorial Board recently had an interest meeting today for the editorial board applications to join for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and they will be released tomorrow. Now pass it off to Georgina.
I don't have anything else to say, Kim.
Okay. Board responses.
Just to confirm clear, did you say Social Justice Week is the week of the seventeenth or the twen- okay, the seventeenth at IHS? Good to know. And the schedule is already posted or, okay. And yes, Brandon, I'm looking forward to PBAT this Thursday. I've been asked a few times and now my schedule has definitely opened up to assist in any which way. So I'm looking forward to being part of the LACS community.
Other responses?
I'll just say that I, my family and I went to go see Hates Town and it was awesome. And we've seen a lot of shows at Culp and that was definitely one of the top ones that we've been to. So shout out to you guys on that.
Yeah, and I'll just add, it was exciting to hear about all the different events. Just to add one more, also, the District Combined Band Concert happened last week. Some people at the table were participants. It was absolutely ridiculously outstanding. So it was very enjoyable for anybody who got to go, hopefully got to catch it, otherwise catch it next time, but extraordinarily impressive. So nice job, guys, for those of you who participated. And if we don't have any other responses, we can move on to our next agenda item. Thank you guys very much for coming tonight and participating, which would be our consent agenda. Happy to entertain some motions.
Motion to approve all consent agenda items listed in consent agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students, and minutes of previous meetings as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved by Emily, seconded by Jill. Any questions about that? Discussion? Okay, call that to a vote. All in favor? All opposed or abstentions? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. And that takes us on to agenda item number ten, which is our superintendent report with Dr. Brown.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Grant White. Good to see everybody. A couple of quick shout-outs. It was great to hear about the high school robotics team. Congratulations on all that you're doing. And thanks for your mentorship of the middle school folks. As you know, and I'm sharing with others, there were the New York State Championships in Syracuse on the fifth of March, I believe. And we had two teams do very well. I think it's the six thirty-nine F team placed twenty-sixth in our state and the six thirty-nine M team won the judges award. So again, examples of excellence, not only the high school, but at our middle school as well. So thank you. Other items are the ICSD Insider will be going out this week, so look for that to fall into inboxes where it highlights our efforts around excellence in our school district, as well as some major announcements. And I too am looking forward to Social Justice Week. And as I learned this last week from a lot of my colleagues, a lot of folks pay attention to our Social Justice Week. And as a reminder to everyone how excited we are that what we do during that week and all weeks is aligned to New York State standards. I've read the academic standards in New York State and they require us to have young people identify problems and then suggest solutions to solve said problems. And those problems range. Oftentimes, they are around classism, sexism, ableism, and racism. And our Social Justice Week is aligned with that particular standard, where our young people are solving those very complex problems with no obvious solution. So I'm excited for it. And as a reminder for the folks I've learned who will follow our meetings and watch, the work we do here is well-done and it's connected to what we are required to teach. And it's aligned to our culturally responsive and sustaining framework from New York State. And it's something that we're very proud of. Again, thank you, young people, and thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you so much. We are gonna move on to item eleven, which is our school district business tonight. We only have one item on our agenda, or one additional item on the agenda, I should say, which is gonna be a start of the, or continuation of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
All right. We're gonna invite Dr. Lisi up to help us frame some things and walk us through some things. And I will begin with, there are a couple of questions we have for the board and we hope to have some guidance before the end of the evening. The next board meeting, we anticipate bringing the formal funding request, the debt fund, that funding request and that presentation that I do annually, where we present the budget that we're putting in front of you to deliberate over and hopefully approve at some point. And tonight's that last conversational development session before we go in to fine-tune, sharpening the pencil for the folks who still use pencils. And the question we want you to, to answer tonight, one, we're, we're proposing a bit of a rollover budget, if we can, if you're familiar with that term. We want to take what we're doing this year and continue doing it next year. No major additions and no, we're not proposing any major reductions. To do that, we will need to address the tax levy. We're gonna be proposing a number to the tax, a tax levy increase that we want to get some feedback on. And if you are okay or amenable to what we're recommending as far as the tax levy increase, we will go back and finish putting the budget together based on those parameters. But quick question, big questions tonight. Do we continue to do what we're doing this year or do you look for us to add or reduce? And two, we need some guidance on the overall tax levy limit because that will go far in determining how we finalize this funding request. Mr. Dr. Lisi, you wanna add a few things and put some additional information in front of our board?
Oh, sure. I think we're just waiting for the presentation.
Yeah, I was trying to drag that out as long as I could. I had no more words. Jill was waiting.
Just, just a quick reminder. Thank you, Dr. Brown. And good evening, everyone. Just a quick reminder. So at the last board meeting, we presented our, our projected revenues. And so we're continuing that process. So this evening, with the promise that this evening, we would at least share preliminary expenses, our preliminary budget for twenty-five, twenty-six and show a comparative of where we are and, and what that looks like. So we'll, we'll go through that with you. So the first slide here is a bit daunting. So just to, to share with you what this really means. This is just a, a high-level way of looking at our three-part budget in a comparison between the current year we're in and the proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And it kind of showed you, shows you the different areas of where, where the, where the changes may have occurred. Is there any way to see the, the very bottom there? Because that the very bottom is what we're gonna, we're gonna focus on here, at least initially.
The next one, yeah. She's not prepared to do that.
Okay.
Because she, this is a slideshow.
Can't do that. That's all right. So I'll share this. That's okay. No, you're fine. You're fine. So what I'll share with you is, let, let's, the, the very first thing I'll, I'll share is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And that currently is a hundred and sixty-three, little over a hundred and sixty-three million. A hundred and sixty-three million, twelve thousand, ninety-eight dollars. And what we're proposing is a four-point-one-seven percent change for twenty-five, twenty-six. And that's shown in here and the total is one sixty-nine. So a hundred and sixty-nine million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. So again, that's a four-point-one-seven percent change. And so again, it's important to show this as a three-part budget. And let me just explain quickly what that means. Because a lot of times there's misunderstanding, at least regarding one part of that. Last time I tried to click with my computer and now I'm using the clicker and it's not working. So there we go. Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that. So we show very quickly, it's, the three-part budget is broken up into three sections, the administrative component, the capital component, and the program component. And very simply, oftentimes, the administrative component is misconstrued as administrative salaries. And that's not the case. In fact, one of the largest hearts of the administrative component is our BOSI's costs. They're part of our BOSI's costs. So there's a lot built into that. It does include administrative salaries, but salaries, but there are, there's a lot more involved in that as well. And again, if you look at the previous slide, it'll break that down a little bit for folks to kind of take a look and see what's in the administrative component. Our capital component, that includes our debt payments, our leasing expenses, our school bus purchases and some of those, those costs. And the last one's obviously our largest, that's our instructional costs. And that kind of covers the whole gamut of those. And again, I'll go back real quick just to give folks a look. So this isn't quite as daunting if you break it up into those three and it looks, you can see how it's compared from one year to the next. Now just go to the, the next slide here and wanted folks to see the change year to year and what that looks like for that three-part budget. So first, the program budget, you can see there's a slight increase there and those are our overall instructional costs. And our capital costs, again, a slight increase. That's how we take care of the district, the grounds, the buildings, and so on and so forth. And of course, our administrative salary, administrative component has actually gone down a bit from eleven point zero three to ten point zero seven. Again, the year-to-year increase, just to remind folks that we're proposing, at least at this point, with the preliminary figures that we've put together, together is four-point-one-seven percent. And what does that look like? So just going through this, our, again, our anticipated revenue that we discussed at the last meeting, what we project at this point is a hundred and sixty-four, little over a hundred and sixty-four million, one sixty-four seven. And that's at a flat tax levy. That's without any change. And the proposed expenditures are a hundred and sixty-nine point eight million. So that leaves us with a shortfall of about five point one million, again, at a flat tax levy. And what I've done is I've break, broken this down with various degrees of tax levy at one percent to the tax cap that was calculated at three point seven six. So you can see what that would look like in increased revenue at each level, the total revenue and the shortfall. So at the tax cap, we're still looking at a shortfall of a little over nine hundred thousand dollars, but we think that we can work through that as we continue to refine the budget.
That says, uh, thank you for your presence. I hope you heard the questions we still have for you in that presentation and we tried as best we could to simplify what is a very complex process. Thoughts, questions, reactions, suggestions for us? And I'll remind the folks about your thinking at home. This presentation and these questions are coming off of almost a year of planning. And the budget development process started in the summer and we've been having, we've been engaged in these conversations since our last budget vote. So this is not new. We've been building this for a while.
So when you say the, so the tax cap is three point seven six percent, and then you just presented some numbers and you said that we have a shortfall of almost a million dollars, so and you think you can work through that million dollars so that we can keep it at the tax cap at three point seven six? How will that happen?
Yeah, but that's a great question. We're, we're gonna have to look at some of, again, this is a preliminary budget without looking at potential reductions in areas. So this is kind of our first run. So there, there's always room.
Were there any surprises with Governor's Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six that will impact us?
I think we, we were pleasantly surprised with state aid increasing. We talked about that a little bit. There's, it was a significant increase, at least in foundation aid. It was mitigated a bit by our building aid being reduced, but we'll, we'll take the win.
And we'll take an overall increase in aid. That's one of the few times over the last fifteen, twenty years that we've had an increase. We've had significant decreases that we've had to account for, but this is from my perspective, a one-time increase, not something we can plan for every year, for sure.
And I think we're still waiting for the finals in April, where we might see an increase there, hopefully, to help with that shortfall.
I mean, one over, one other initial reaction that I would have is, just as one board member, I'm glad that the proposal is staying within the tax cap. That's something that I would want to see for this year personally. So that seems like a good start to me.
Thank you for sharing. And we think we heard that during the development process to this point. We heard from the board to try to work towards staying under the tax cap for the foreseeable future. Dr. Blayla?
Thank you. So I mean, I just really, just to put a couple of comments on the record. Although this is a continuation of the budget we had last year, I just want to kind of remind people, the budget last year had quite a few changes. I don't know if you want to, you know, the cut in administration, and I don't mean BOSI's part of administration, but the cut in administration staff, what was that? It was like?
We cut administrative costs by twenty-five percent.
That's right. That's the figure I remember. So just kind of remind the public that what we're doing is carrying forward a budget that made a, a lot of changes last year in response to the budgeting process and the budget vote. So those, those changes, particularly reductions in administrative costs, remain in place. And we're, we're moving forward with those reductions in place.
Yeah.
So that, that's important. The second comment I would add, just from the perspective of the finance committee, is that, you know, there's the short run and, and there's long run. And we heard loud and clear last year, the concerns public had about the the tax levy. And we responded to that. And again, we're caring for those, but the longer-term response to some of the concerns is also an issue. And so we have put forth an RFP to look at future enrollment patterns, demographics. So we've got some responses back just last, last week to those and we're evaluating them. And so the, the, the process of long-term seeking of efficiencies is ongoing and that is independently of this.
Thank you.
I, I did have two quick questions, if that's okay. I was just curious. Earlier, it said that administrative costs are gonna decrease next year. I was just wondering what accounts for that decrease?
A couple of things, fewer administrators and supply codes, contracts, all the things that go into that line, we've been looking at and making reductions over the last year.
And say there was a shortfall of, say, I don't, anywhere between nine hundred and thirty-three thousand and about almost four million. If that couldn't be balanced in the budget somehow, would that shortfall put us in debt for next year? Or how exactly does that work?
No, we'd have to look at either reductions or using fund balance to support that.
Thanks for your questions.
Does the budget that you've proposed here in any way? Are, are, is there any way that it isn't a rollover budget? Is there, are there programs that were cut last year that have been brought back? Are there planned cuts that, that we can't see here at first glance that, that you can share with us?
And, and again, these are the parameters in which we wish to work from and we are still finalizing. So we So we, as far as additions or restorations, we don't anticipate much of that from where we were last summer. And we have not included any additions at this point. If there are requests, tonight would be tonight. If the board has some suggestions and working with our budget developers, our principals and our directors, there are no requests for additions. And they are working hard to figure out how we work with all the things that they know they won't be coming back. So again, if there are some suggestions for us to restore some things, that would be the time to talk through it.
No, I too am pleased to see us coming in at the tax cap. And thanks for your hard work to get us there.
Other things, we're going to be monitoring our investment strategy, which in the past has been favorable for us, that allow for us to make up that kind of a difference of 900,000. Like every year, at this point, we have a bit of a gap we need to make up. And we wait for the final governor runs, which typically come in a little higher than the conservative estimates upfront. We fortunately have been able to benefit from a strong investment strategy to make up some of that. And we've been able to rely on fund balances. And all of these things are anticipating, or are based on our assumptions with regards to our collective bargaining agreements, which we've settled all but one. And we have said very publicly now where we hope to have those come in. Any adjustments from what we've said publicly, as far as the parameters, which we are looking to settle our agreements with, would need to be adjusted in what we're doing here too. So just to remind folks, this is based on a year's worth of work and a lot of different parameters that go into, I tried to make that case on the radio this morning, but I only had seven minutes. So if folks have additional questions about how all of these revenue streams work and how the expenditures work, please call and/or tune in as we hope to bring more information next week, two weeks. Oh, let me, the question on the table, this is under the tax cap. Can we assume that we can build a budget based on 3.76% increase? Or is there another number that the board wants for us to entertain? I don't think I heard an explicit number there.
So just going to repeat, we are always in our long-term planning, looking at ways to cut expenses and be more efficient. As I said, we have ongoing studies on that. But in the short run, if we're going to continue to carry on our program with the cuts, both in administration and also program offerings that we put in place last year, my personal view would be that the tax cap is a reasonable way forward. What I heard the public say last year was that the tax cap was what they were comfortable with. I believe that remains the public sentiment. You know, we'll certainly listen to folks when they come in. But I personally have not heard any public feedback that suggests that we should move forward at the tax cap.
Thank you, Neil.
Question. So this is mean that people in Ithaca are going to get a raise in their taxes in order to make up for the shortfall? And if so, how much, like, how much more would it?
We will get tighter on that. That we have to do a lot to figure that out. We will be proposing a 3.7% levy increase. Now that the rate is what would go into one's tax bill going up and we need to work with the assessor to see the overall assessed value of property. So there's some other things we would have to, we've, in the past, we've had a levy, we propose a levy increase and we've had taxes go down because the rate didn't change. So that's another conversation. And we'll bring the most recent information to the next meeting when we propose some things. We anticipate maybe an increase to the average bill in our community.
Okay, thank you.
That is a great question though.
Awesome question.
And I think we need to remind our listeners too and the community that we did hear the assessments would not be changed, right? That's a critical factor and that the tax base may go up.
Yeah.
That's another critical factor, which will have implications on that. So that's a really great question.
Yeah, I, again, it's all preliminary, but I think the good message we can give the taxpayers, based on what Dr. Lisi just said, with the assessment office coming in and the tax bases, that probably their taxes will remain similar to what they were last year. So I would suspect that the average change in most homeowners' tax bill would be a bit less than the tax cap because of the new growth. But I don't think we have full numbers on that.
Right, we don't know that yet. But if that's the case and it does go up 1%, then that would be the case. Correct.
Is there any chance of a language program, like with all the classes being combined, like that'll come back to as it was?
Another great question.
When we propose the final budget, we will speak to that. We're still working with administrators, much of that's based on class size and how we, so if I can ask for some additional time to come up with that very specific question. And I'm looking at our board members. If that's something you want to make sure we entertain and we put together this final proposal. So I guess it's a both and. Y'all would like for us to entertain what something like that could look like. And we would need some time to figure out what that would look like before we bring it back. And I think I owe it to folks, are there other things? Because that's one program that we heard from people about. But there, I know I heard from a lot of folks about a lot of other programs. So if we end this conversation about what programs to restore, I'm looking to my board, how you wish for me to approach that?
Right, I was going to say, at this stage, we can do an evaluation of all the programs that were impacted last year and what it would look like going forward. But we, it wouldn't benefit us to take one specific program because there are a host of people who are not here today that would definitely rally for their specific programs to be in the budget. And knowing that we're trying to continue with some of the priorities that we have as a district too.
I mean, maybe without any regard to specific programs, but this is general philosophy. Last year, we made some hard cuts. And you know, those cuts, I don't think are going to come back. As a general approach though, for programs that remain, I think we'd like to operate them at the highest quality possible. So I guess a general approach, just me speaking, what we cut is gone and probably not going to come back. What remains, we want to continue to offer at the highest quality. I think that's just my general approach.
And I'll remind folks, it wasn't a specific program cut. It was a class-sized threshold. And we decided that we would not run a course that didn't have at least 15 students in it. So the reduction or the elimination or us not offering courses was, whatever language you want to use was because of a threshold that we put in place. Now, any adjustments to that threshold brings in the conversation about equity and how will we pick one over the other? So we have a formula and an adjustment to that formula can have some caveats. But I'm not hearing y'all want us to go forward with caveats to a formula. Claire, I hope you understood that. I'm just reminding you, it wasn't, we targeted your program. It was about what we did. Because there's elementary classrooms that are large this year too. And we put some class-sized minimums in place and maximums in place that we've been using.
And since the discussion started as this is a rollover budget, if we're looking at it that way, we should seriously consider continuing on. And as Garrick had said, looking to see how we can excel in the different areas that we're in at the moment.
Go for it, Emily.
I, I, sorry, I'm trying to, like on the spot, trying to figure out what I want to ask you. I guess, yes, rollover and maybe not being able to bring things back, but hopeful also that considerations are being given to the the quality and impact of the programs that have remained. And I guess I would love to hear a little bit about like, I know that you guys are constantly kind of evaluating and looking at that data, but when, when does that, like kind of looking at kind of everything from class sizes to individual programs and kind of making an assessment of like, wow, we actually, this wasn't going well and maybe we shouldn't do it anymore. We could save money there or vice versa.
I would say it's ongoing and it's in addition to, or at the same time as the budget conversation. And to your credit and Dr. Grant White, you've been having those conversations in curriculum committee. The quality of an individual academic program is a curriculum conversation. And we have other venues to do that. Again, this is around parameters around 169 million dollars. And it's kind of hard to parse down into a fraction of an FTE. We're offering our academic programs based on some parameters that we set forth last year. And if we want to provide some caveats for an individual program, that's just a different conversation and a request. But we just know what that lifting up that hood may bring to the community. But the quality of our program is something we're always looking at and we can engage in that conversation at any point. Thanks for the question. You came up with that one really well. Quick, I was on the spot. We good, y'all? We have the questions answered that we needed answered, unless there's some other questions or requests from y'all. And we look forward to presenting some final approaches at our next meeting.
All right, I guess I, nothing to ask you all, but just to let folks know in general that we are all in the exact team, as well as the board, like looking forward to engaging the community in these conversations. We've had a number of PTAs reach out to us requesting that we come visit their specific communities and schools to be able to talk about this more in depth or to ask question or answer questions that are more specific to their concerns. And so also, I know, I'm sure that the district is going to be, you know, holding events and opportunities to talk about it. But if there are folks in specific schools that you would want to engage this group in those conversations, that's something that we're all eager and willing to do and I encourage you to reach out.
And as I always enjoy bringing people back to our website, which has the budget timeline for the rest of this year, fiscal year. So we have detail because our finance committee meets next week Tuesday, as well as at our upcoming voted board meetings that we would have this continued discussion.
And also feeling free to use Let's Talk. And maybe just like one plug about Let's Talk, I think, I mean, it has, I mean, it can be used in different ways. I mean, if you want to communicate information, you can fill out a form, we'll read the information. If you want to engage in any kind of a back and forth, you know, please include your name and an email address. And then we can actually respond to whatever is said when we get anonymous posts. So Let's Talk, we read them, we get that information, but then we never really get a chance to have any kind of a dialogue. So feel free to use however you see fit, but we'd be happy to engage in more of a back and forth if you can give us that information.
So all those resources that Adam Karen just mentioned, and Emily, I want to thank you. I know I will be visiting two schools in the next week or two and happy to visit more. So thank you for reaching in.
Thank you.
Maybe that.
Thanks so much.
My pleasure.
Okay, so that moves us on to item 12, which is other business, which is an open-ended question. Do we have any other business to discuss tonight? Would anybody like to talk about anything else? Okay. Well, in that case, we will be adjourning our meeting for the night. Looking forward to seeing everybody soon and enjoy a nice early end to the evening.